I will call our work session to order being held virtually via WebEx of November 24th, 2020. We have two items. It'd be great if, I'm going to try to keep us to 35 minutes for each item. The first one is discussing a planning study that would examine the land use regulations applicable to properties along Portland Avenue and 66th Street in the area surrounding Veterans Park. And that's a joint session with our HRA, the City Council, and the Planning Commission. And then the second item is a Richfield COVID-19 update with Jennifer Anderson, our Community Health Services Administrator, Nick Kelly, HD of the City of Bloomington Public Health. And he's acting as a public health administrator. And then our Public Safety Director, Emergency Prepared, Emergency Manager, Chief Jay Hen Thorne. So I will just pass it to City Manager Rodriguez to get us started on the first item.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start with a brief intro to our planning studies discussion. The American Legion has been working with us over the past few months as they contemplate the sale of their property. They are here today and will provide an update. Tonight's work session is to bring you up to speed on that process and also discuss the city's process going forward. Since Veterans Park is such an important location, we are recommending a moratorium for nine months to provide policymakers and residents time to review options and to provide guidance on how potential development relates to the park. We had originally recommended six months, but due to the resurgence of the pandemic and the holidays, we feel that nine months is more practical. This will be a two-step approach. Director Markle and I will be working with our financial advisor, Ellers, to provide better information on the financial feasibility of the city, potentially purchasing the property, or partnering in a future development to provide community space. We plan to present this information along with a summary of recent community engagement on recreation priorities. Director Markle is also researching how other cities are meeting recreation and community space needs. We are hoping to bring this information to the council at a work session in January. Council will need to provide direction at that meeting in order to inform the small area plan process. And that is step two. Community Development Director John Stark and Assistant Director Melissa Paleman will briefly describe the small area plan process tonight, following the presentation from the American Legion. And before I ask Commander Siemens to speak, I want to stress again that tonight we are seeking feedback on the process to make these decisions and providing time to do so with the moratorium. I also want to thank the commander and the Legion for their partnership. And we do remain optimistic that future development can meet their needs and the communities. And Commander Siemens, if you're on the line, if you could take over now.
Yep, I'm here. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. All right. So Madam Chair, Commissioners, Council members, and others, my case to introduce, my name's Adam Siemens. I'm the commander of the Minneapolis Richfield American Legion Post 435. Thank you for inviting myself and my team here today to speak with you. Our post operates as a 501(c)(19), a veterans service organization. Our headquarters, as you know, is located at 6501 Portland Avenue, south here in Richfield. We've been at that location since 1957. It was March of 1957 it was inaugurated there. With me here today have our lead team of post representatives. They are Glenn McCluskey, who's post counsel and our team lead, Peter Coyle, who's our co-council, as well as Diane Miller, who's our post controller. We, as a post, are looking forward to working with you, working with the city to make the future use of this very important piece of property, the use that could meet both the post's needs, the city, as well as the larger community as a whole. Post 435 has been a vital and active member of the American Legion Post, of the American Legion, as well as serving the needs of veterans and others since it was first chartered in 1979, sorry, 1927. My position as commander is similar to that of a CEO of a corporation. However, Post 435 has members. It doesn't have stockholders, right? So members elect the board of directors to oversee the operations of the post, and I effectively serve as the president of that board of directors. Currently, our post has a little over 1,000 members. Prior to taking over as post commander in July of 2019, the post, as many of you may be aware, experienced some financial difficulties. This occurred from several causes. My goal as commander has been to turn the financial and operations around to ensure a stronger future for our post. A reorganization plan to help with this was first implemented in December of 2019. Our current board of directors say we're working hard to revitalize our posts and to make sure that our post has the ability to continue to serve not only the needs of our membership and veterans, but our community as a whole. We've made great strides in my time as commander. We have a full-time professional controller now who's been on board since 2019. We have internal controls in place which have significantly improved our operations, such as bringing a third-party CPA firm on board to help us work our books and everything. In addition, all of this, post accounting was done by that CPA firm. It's done no longer in-house, and we also have a legal team on board to help guide us through this difficult time and to ensure our governing documents are current and followed in terms of all membership action taken by the post. Currently, the largest asset our post has is the land and the post building itself. In order to generate the income we need to build our future, we have just completed the process of obtaining the required approval to list the building and our land for sale, not only from our post board of directors, but also our membership and our Post 435 Holding Corporation, which actually holds the title of the building and the land itself. The final hurdle to an actual sale is approval by the Office of the Minnesota Attorney General, which under state law must give its blessing to any nonprofit sale. Seeking that approval is underway, but once submitted, there's a 45-day waiting period before the building can actually change hands. We were able to list it for sale very shortly, however. Our plan is to obtain funds from this sale to be used for all financial affairs of the post, including the unlimited two, of course, ensuring all post bills are paid within 30 days, retiring old debt, as well as preserving sufficient funds to ensure that Post 435 has a long future and we are able to carry out our charitable and patriotic services to veterans in our community. In addition to obtaining money from the sale, the post and its membership wish to maintain a strong presence in the city of Richfield, which we serve and where we have lived since, like I said, 1957. I myself, as a resident, I'm sorry, I myself am a resident of Richfield and have been since 2008. It is also our current strong desire to maintain our physical presence within the current real estate footprint. This means we need to work with you, the city of Richfield, and whoever's chosen as a buyer and developer to help design a workable and effective space for a post that needs far into the future. The post is assembling a team that will be available to work directly with the city on all matters relating to the sale and developments. We know you have certain plans and parameters and laws and regulations you have to follow, and now you know that the post also has certain needs and expectations for this property as well. My goal and my vision for this post is that Post 435 and the city of Richfield continue to work together to ensure that the vision we have for Post 435 at that site is one that works not only for us, but for the city as well and our community. We are about to enter a listing agreement for the sale of the property with a real estate broker. We assume the broker will be a major player in all future discussions that will take place. In addition, I have already introduced you to our legal team comprised of attorneys of Glenn McCluskey and Peter Coyle, joined by myself and our controller. We are going to spearhead the post's efforts on external matters relating to the sale and development, along with the broker. We hope that our team here we've assembled and the city will interact effectively during the planning process to assure everyone's needs are met. A very important part, a very important part of post's process and all this has only just begun. Since the sale has only just very recently been approved by all necessary bodies of our post, we are now embarking on seeking input from our members as to the needs and desires for the future home of our post. We will be setting up two or more meetings with members to both brainstorm or then narrow down what the post is looking for in terms of space needs, access, maybe some housing, and the like. Currently, we plan to have an initial session with members and perhaps some online comment-taking to get a general idea of their wishes. We want to hear from the city as well as to what needs and parameters it has and that will affect the project. We then plan to take that back to the members for their responses and get their questions, their concerns, as we continue to work and craft for an effective solution that meets the needs of all our stakeholders here, provides the most benefit for not only the post, but the city and the residents of Richfield, quite a few of whom are post members. We believe that we are still early in this process and will take some time to hear our members out, effectively communicate with them, and to get their questions answered on an ongoing basis as the project develops. We have told them this will take some time. We don't want to move faster than a prudent, but we are not dragging our feet either. So as commander here, I have been empowered by the post's members, its board of directors, and the holding corporation to provide leadership to the post in all these efforts. The post considers the sale of the property and working with the city, the buyer, and our developer as the best way for the post to reach a future that best meets all our needs and brings excitement, spirit of community involvement, and a great way to continue to serve our members, veterans, and our community at large. That being said, the post is, we are quite opposed to any moratorium, which we think will put potential sale funds farther from the post's grasp. As well as the real estate market may change very substantially in a nine-month period, we are fearful that a downturn in the real estate market and a much lower price may result. This would have a very adverse impact on Post 435 and its members, many of whom are Richfield residents. As stated, we understand the planning process will take some time, but slowing the process further by formalizing a moratorium is not something the post can endorse at this time. We ask that you table any vote on a moratorium until all sides have had a chance to consider and talk about the repercussions of such a moratorium. That's all I have. I thank you again for allowing me and my team the chance to be here today. Are there any questions for myself or for my team?
Counsel, Sean Hefford O'Leary, Commissioner Hefford O'Leary.
I just wanted to ask a quick clarifying question. So my understanding was that the Legion was looking to sell this land and their future post or location would be somewhere else or in some other type of building. Some of the language in the commander's presentation suggests that they were going to remain at that, like as part of a new development. Is that their intent, or is their intent to be somewhere entirely away from this site on Portland?
Our intent, as I am working with our team going forward, is that Post 435 will remain at that location in some capacity. What that looks like, I'm not sure yet. Like I mentioned before, we're going to be working with our members to see what they envision and working with the city of Richfield as well to come to some sort of shared vision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commander. Commissioner Elliott. You're on, and there we go.
Okay. Commander, can you tell me when's the first time the city approached you about the possibility of a moratorium?
I'm going to go ahead. We first heard about that today. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for our legal counsel Glenn McCluskey to lay in, I'm sorry, to comment further on that.
Okay, thank you.
May I?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I will defer also to Peter Coyle, who will take the lead in this. But yes, just today is the first time we heard the word "moratorium", and also the idea behind it was explained.
May I ask how many conversations either you participated in or the commander or the members of the Legion have had with the cities up through today's date?
Well, that depends on what you mean by meetings, but I have...
Just conversations about the city's plans as opposed to the Legion's plans and how they were going to be coordinated?
Yeah, I have had two, but I would have to ask the others may have had. I haven't been there. So Diane may have had additional, and as with Commander Siemens as well.
And the only reason I'm going in this direction, I'm just a little bit concerned that the first time you hear about a moratorium is today. The first notice I had of it was three days ago or four days ago when I got the agenda, and it was six months, and it's already moved to nine months. I'm a little concerned about what kind of position that puts the Legion in in formulating their plans, or whether or not even hiring a listing agent's going to have any merit because there's no idea what the city's going to do or how long the moratorium's going to last.
Well, we agree. That puts us in a quandary. We don't know. And it's something we obviously don't want and adds a note of uncertainty. And you know, who likes that? But I would ask Peter Coyle to comment further. His wishes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. I think that's been stated. We're concerned about the delay. We're concerned about the restrictions that the moratorium imposes. It slows down the listing process. It slows down the subsequent application and development process. And conceivably, by the time the city's process is wrapped up, we will have lost all of 2021 as any kind of a development year and opportunity to sell the property. So it's a timing issue first and foremost, but it's also the uncertainty now that the city's process is going to inject as to whether or not they're even going to be able to put multifamily in a shared use arrangement on the property at the end of the day.
Okay. Quick question for somebody from the city. Is there any reason it wasn't until today till the Legion and the members were told that there's a possibility of a moratorium?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. I know we do have the staff presentation part as well, so I'm going to pass it to the staff to do that part, to answer your question and to do the part as well, so we can continue and then keep the conversation going. I'll pass it to Director Stark.
Thank you. So I'll get to the question, but let me just back up a little bit. When the Legion first approached us, and I think we've been talking to the Legion about this probably since April, if I had to guess. So when they first approached staff about the idea of selling their property and what the appropriate uses would be, you know, the first place we always go is to what the council and other policymakers have told us in the past on land use. And what that means for us is the comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan was adopted in 2018, which shows this site is multifamily housing. Actually, the prior two plans in 2008 and 1997 also showed this as multifamily housing. So we, in our discussions with the Legion, we did tell them that that's how the property was guided. That's what we'd heard from policymakers and the community as the primary use of the property. As we talked with them, we did hear them talking about their desire to continue to have some presence at the site in addition to multifamily housing. We also started to hear from the community some desire for community space, kind of just generically stated, "community space", which could mean a whole lot of things. So in our conversations with the Legion folks, what we talked about was kind of a Venn diagram, where one circle would be multifamily housing, as it stated in the comprehensive plan. One circle would be a Legion presence, which they've desired and told us they desired. And one circle would be community space. And so we talked about hopefully finding a solution where there could be some overlap in those circles. And so that is something we've talked about at length. We've spoken with not only the Legion folks, we've also spoken to their potential brokers and to a couple of potential buyers. Maybe six weeks ago, as we discussed it, we were hearing some concerns, and we had some concerns ourselves about the specifics of what a development there would look like. And I'll just throw out some examples. For example, we heard some concerns like, "Well, gosh, we'd hate to lose the visibility of Veterans Park to Portland Avenue." And so we said, "Well, maybe that's somewhere where we'd want to think about what's called a view corridor, preserving a view corridor, so that when you're on Portland, you could still see that the park is there." We know that this is an area with a lot of wildlife, and there may be concerns about birds. Well, there's probably some things we should look into in terms of appropriate glass for flyway areas. And so as we kind of had this discussion, it became evident to us that we really didn't have the appropriate kind of, what in planning you call "development standards" for the site. And so we did talk with the Legion folks about conducting a plan. When we talked to them about this, and we were very specific in several meetings where we said, you know, "As part of that Legion, we would ask you to pause your process, to put it on hold, to allow us to do this plan." And so we, I don't believe we ever used the word "moratorium", but a moratorium is the tool by which we would ask them to pause this. It's kind of formalizing the pause, which we'd talked to them about on several occasions. So you know, if there was a misunderstanding about what that pause meant, you know, City Manager Rodriguez and I were in all these meetings, we can certainly discuss that further. In terms of the reasoning for the moratorium, and City Manager Rodriguez has talked about a two-step process, community development isn't really as involved in the first step. The first step, as I heard it described, was exploring the idea of what this community space might be. Is it a full-blown community center? Is it something less than that? Is there no community space there? And that's the first step of the process that Recreation Services Markle and our financial consultants and the city manager would work on. The second part of the process would be this planning study that I've mentioned, where we talk about things like view corridors or height of buildings or those kinds of things. And the reason for the moratorium is that, let's say we're in the middle of discussing a view corridor. If they turned in an application for a development that did not have a view corridor, that's something that we couldn't enforce if the planning study hadn't been completed and that had not yet been adopted into city ordinances. So that's community development's purpose in the moratorium. If there are other tools to achieve that, we'd certainly be willing to entertain them, but you know, this is something, City Attorney Techen is on the call, I believe, and this is something we discussed with her, as well as the city manager, and thought that it was really in the city's best interest to protect our interests.
Before we continue with questions, I want to make sure if there's additional presentation by staff that we get through that as well, so we can get through the whole presentation, and then we can jump into questions and continue discussion. Is there more presentation?
You know, if you want to hear more about the plan process itself, the small area planning process, we had asked a couple of consultants to look at that. We can discuss that, or we could wait on that conversation until December or January, if that would be better. So that's really up to you as a group.
So what's in front of us today is discussing the moratorium itself, working with Ellers and the consultant group to do the engagement plan, the process itself versus in the weeds and what the process would look like, correct?
Right. We are not ready to get in the weeds on the small area planning study itself.
So if there's not additional presentation on that, then we can open it back up for discussions on proposals that's in the work session packet and continued discussion for folks. Are there questions or comments folks would like to raise? Councilmember Supple.
Sorry, I had to get to the mute button. I want to address the, you had four questions in our packet of things to talk about, and I want to address the fourth one. And that question was, "Is there support for seeking financial guidance from Ellers on the feasibility of adding public amenities to the area?" I think it's really important to look at what the options are. I don't know what those type of public amenities are, whether it's a community center or something else that we could work in partnership with the Legion on. But I know during this time of the pandemic and all that, we need to think about what are the financial options because this is one of those like opportunities that doesn't come along very often. It's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime thing. And so I think we should explore how could we feasibly finance it, but also responsibly finance it. So I would be in support of seeking that guidance and looking at the feasibility of doing some public amenities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Other folks who would like to speak? Commissioner Hefford O'Leary, and then Commissioner Elliott.
Just since we have limited time to give a very clear answer, personally, I think the moratorium is a good idea. I am not clear why it needs to go from six to nine months since our packet, just because the main thing that has to happen is these consultants do their work in that time. It doesn't seem contingent on the market to react. So if it can be shorter, that would be great. But I think in general, the Legion's interest in selling the land quickly is directly opposed to our interest in making sure that it's an appropriate land use that ends up there. I would also, I agree with Councilmember Supple that the question about it being a public use is important. I'm only a little bit concerned about doing them at the same time because it seems like the real question is, is it feasible for the city to buy it? And if it's not, then what? So it seems a little weird to not answer the question about buying it for public use and go ahead with having land use. That seems like it may or may not be relevant. But my key point, I think the moratorium is justified. I hope the council approves it later tonight.
Thank you. Before we go to Commissioner Elliott, could staff respond to the question about the six months changed to the nine months? City Manager?
Yeah, I'll start out, Mayor, and Director Stark, if you want to jump in at any point. So this is also a response to Councilmember Alexon Hefford O'Leary's comment. We need to do that first step. So we do need to bring to the council the financial parameters and work with Ellers to see if it is financially feasible to either purchase this and build a community center, which I have said I have my concerns about, or can we participate and partner in something small, community space? And so that's the first step, and that is the reason why I'm worried about trying to do a study for six months. We have to do that step first and then do the study for six months. And because it is an important asset for the city, we want to be able to build public engagement into that six-month planning study. And John, or I'm sorry, Director Stark, if there's something that I've forgotten?
No, I would just add that, you know, the planning study, the small area plan study itself, when we talked to consultants, we shared with them that, you know, time wasn't the essence. Because of COVID and the way that we have to interact with the public, that added time, you know, it's a little less efficient to engage the public. And so I think there's going to have to be a different way of doing it that takes a little more time. So in the planning study, they need six, they forecast their process to last six months. So when City Manager Rodriguez talked about this two-step approach, the second step of the planned study itself is when we would need six months for that planned study. But I would just also state that the language of the moratorium allows for a couple of things. It does allow for it to be terminated early at the council's discretion. It also allows for exceptions at the council's discretion.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. And then I know if folks can be briefed, that would be appreciated because they do want to make sure we're hearing from everybody on this important issue. Commissioner Elliott? Oh, you're on mute.
My first comment would be, is this discussion is becoming very one-sided. It's all about the city and not about the survival of the Legion. Legion's been here since 1957, making really, really nice contributions to the community, and we can't just discount them and discount the fact that we're going to put them on hold for six or nine months when they're trying to figure out a way to survive. I would hope that we'd have a little bit more consideration for them. And we're talking about a city asset. We've got to remember that they own that city asset. And what we're trying to do is put them in a position where they may not even be able to put it on the market for a year. Six months in city talk very easily translates into 12 or 18 months. That's my concern. That's my concern. We put a moratorium on it for six months or nine months. There's no, 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 no conviction on my part that we're going to get it done in there. And then they're going to have to open it back up again and try to put it on the market, subject to whatever restrictions the city is going to put on. I'm, I'm sorely, significantly against a moratorium. We can do it. A pause is not a moratorium. If you're discussing a pause with them, John, and you turn it into a moratorium, they're two entirely separate things. I think we're overreaching and being somewhat paternal over what the Legion may or may not be able to do. And we're going to try, but they're trying to guide their future the same way we're trying to guide ours. And I wish you'd give due deference to them and listen to what their concerns are before we start moving forward and closing them down for a year or 18 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Levin, or Commissioner Elliott. I saw Commissioner Levin's hand up and then Commissioner Reese Daniels. And then Commissioner Sandel. You're still on mute, Commissioner Levin.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Hello? Okay, good. Peter Levin on the Planning Commission. I just have a question for the city because it seems like we're going to go one or two ways. The city is either going to be involved with the development of this parcel or else they're going to allow go into private investment. And this place, this place has been dark for months. And I'm wondering why these conversations about the feasibility of, of involvement, community development in some way with, or without the Legion on site hasn't been discussed or at least, at least in some ways vetted prior to now? Because now it seems like we're placing some undue burden on the Legion to say, no, you can't do anything with the site for a period up to nine months. Whereas, I mean, everyone could see that, that this was vacant. And the city could have been saying, if, if the opportunity arose, could we or should we be involved with that? So I guess I'm just, I, I guess I agree that it's, I think, a little bit of an undue burden to, to place this moratorium on the Legion and, and say you can't do anything for a period of time when it's really, you know, a question of one way or the other, which we could have certainly been discussing earlier. Thank you.
Commissioner Reese Daniels?
I had a question on the moratorium. Does it prevent them from selling to anyone? And what does it actually prevent? Or is it, does it prevent them from selling to anyone other than what the comp plan states?
Assistant Director Pellman?
Thank you. The moratorium actually prevents them from requesting permits for development activities. So they could still sell. The realistic answer though is that nobody's going to buy until that moratorium is off because it leads to uncertainty. So they'll want to know what the city's going to decide, what the rules will be, before they would go ahead with a purchase. So any purchase agreement would be, would have contingencies in it to wait out that moratorium.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandel. And then Commissioner Quam?
Thank you. I would support Commissioner, excuse me, councilperson Supple's response. And that is that, having served so many years on the Richfield City Council and on the HRA over time, this is a once-in-a-lifetime possibility that I think the city needs to look at. And if, if we need additional six months, we've done moratoriums in the past on other places in the city. And if we need the time to, to look at it, my guess is the, is that the American Legion will also need additional time as they meet with their potential investors or buyers. And I think these could be ongoing, even though maybe they can't actually seek a permit to do something. I think we would be very upset and then, and the residents would be very upset if we put in something that just was not, that was incongruent to that particular park. They spent a lot of money building banshells and picnic shelters and new pool facilities. And all of that is an amenity which would certainly benefit the Legion if in fact those things, if they are able to sell their property in the future. But it also behooves the city to protect the residents and the users of those facilities to make sure that whatever use goes in is something that is complimentary and not totally in a, at the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandel. I'm going to pass it to city manager Rodriguez to answer Commissioner Levin's question, and then we can go to Commissioner Quam.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The reason the city waited is because we needed to have, and this was at the Legion's request. The Legion needed to go through their process with their membership before we could be bringing options to the council publicly.
Thank you, Commissioner Quam.
I have a question and then a really quick comment. So I think it was Commander Stevenson. Are you here? What, okay. So as you were talking, I'm trying to get my head around everything that you were saying. But were you saying that you would, if it was sold to the city, you would, or the Legion would have like a relationship, like a legal relationship in deciding what would come of it?
I, I meant in the sense that the Legion would partner with the city and any developer or buyer that we identify to make sure not only are the Legion's needs met for any new, new space on that, on that property, but also the city's needs are also met for, for that space. I, I, I use buyer and developer kind of generically because, because obviously they, they are not identified yet. We, we've had this process going. We've had these conversations with the city going for a number of months now. And that was our understanding to go forward and we continue to have these conversations, continue to have this input, continue to have this dialogue going forward. So then when we got it all hammered out, we could be nimble enough and then act on whatever agreements or whatever vision we have with the city to move forward. And we feel that with a moratorium, six or nine months long, that takes away that ability to be nimble when that consensus or when that vision is reached.
Okay, thank you. So that, it just sounded, this is directed at everyone. That just sounded, it sounds more complicated than I understand, like how that would work out if there were disagreements along the process. But anyway, that's for someone else to figure out. And I, I mean, I thought if, if community development is proposing a $35,000 study plus some financial assistance, it, they must think it's pretty important to have this study. And I see the value of such a big purchase and such a big change that I, I just want to say that I support the six-month or six-month plus the, the initial step. I think that's important to doing the right thing because it's such a big planning project. And times are uncertain right now for both sides. So it's, it's just better to be prudent, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there folks who have not spoken yet? Okay, we have our city attorney Techin and councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know your time is limited, so I'll be very brief. And as a city attorney, obviously I don't take a position on these things. So I'm just going to tell you that a couple of things the moratorium does not do, does not prevent the Legion from continuing with their planning process. It does not prevent the Legion from working collaboratively with the city during the planning study. And from what I've heard with discussions with staff, that's, that is the intention. The moratorium simply protects the planning process because without the moratorium, if there's an application for development, the city by law has to act on it. And so the moratorium simply protects the process and puts a hold on that process so that, as Director Stark explained earlier, there's a pause on having to act on process, any applications that might come forward.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, I just want to say a couple of thank yous. I want to, I want to say thank you to the, the Legion and thank you to our staff. This is, this is an opportunity that, like councilmember Supple said, you know, is once-in-a-generation, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I think the city is in a very unique place to, like Commissioner Elliott said, recognize the value that the, that the Legion has and continue to have in the community. And we're, we're also in a, in a unique place to be able to invest, to jointly invest and make the sum of the parts greater than a whole in a way that may be different and more advantageous to the Legion than other, other potential, potential buyers. So I just want to, I want to, I want to bring just a, a posture of gratefulness here to, to everybody, for our staff, for, for looking at this and wanting to bring our, our entire community along. But also, also for the, the Legion. And since we're thinking about this as a, as a potential long-term partnership, I just would hope that, I, I see the prudence in the moratorium, but I would hope that we could come to a collaborative agreement on the timeline that, that maybe works for our potential partner in the midst of this. So I would, I would support it. But I just, you know, as, as passionate as everybody is about this, I just want to make sure that we just take a moment and just say how incredible and how marvelous this is that we could, we could collaborate with the Legion. We could just hopefully at the end of this, have a space that serves the community in a really, in a really incredible way.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman for those words. Are there folks who have not yet weighed in who would like to weigh in? Councilmember Wayland?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Commander.
Yes, our, our post, our post controller, Diane Miller, would like to briefly comment here real quick.
Thank you, Diane.
Good evening. And yes, we have been in, involved with the city staff. And I really do respect and understand the position they are in. I am a former city manager. But the, I just want to remind the council that the reason the post is selling the property is because of the significant financial situation we are in now. And any moratorium is not going to pay our property taxes. I myself have deferred my salary since January. I am not getting paid, but I am dedicated to, to the, to the veterans organization to be the best they can. So I'm just going to leave it with you that there is a significant burden that you will be placing on the Legion that, you know, I'm going to have to sit down and scratch my head and work with the commander in terms of what do we do for the next few months then, if you put a moratorium on us? I don't know the impact with the bank that we're in discussions with to get some temporary funds in terms of what this does. So I just leave with you tonight, this has significant financial burden on, on the post if you move forward with the moratorium to such a position that it's tying our hands. We have very limited options. That is why unfortunately, the only choice we have right now is to sell. But again, I, I wish all of you continue strength as you continue working in the best interest of the community. And as Commander Siemens did say, that there are 200 members that are Richfield residents plus the additional 800 that all come to this area, that we support the local community nonprofits through our patriotic and community services. That moratorium stops us from moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to extend this part of the session to 6:35 with a hard stop at 6:35 because we do have the Public Health Department to give us a COVID update. So I'm extending 10 minutes in. Councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, I'll be brief. And I, I appreciate hearing the, the urgency of where the, the Legion post is at. I, I'm curious. It seems to me like the biggest decision the city needs to make is the step one of like, is there, and I think, I do think it's really important that we do that and have the time to do that. But I, and I, I appreciate, and my understanding was that we didn't, we didn't know if that was an option, if the sale was happening until very recently, even though there were conversations around that. I wonder though, what, what options are there? Or is there realistically any option past January? If we commit to the Legion that we as a city will make a decision in January around whether or not we're considering, or to what extent we're considering being partners in this as a potential buyer or partial buyer or some kind of buy-in? But anyway, after we make that decision, is it feasible for, in the, the small area plan process, which seems like it is more about the specific design, which I recognize like how tall a building is could have significant impacts on who wants to buy and develop and such? But I'm wondering if there is opportunity in that to have at the end of the moratorium, have involved the Legion, involved some potential buyers like to the level that there could conceivably be like a sale in the final month and like ready to submit a permit the day that it ends? Or is that just like not realistic? And it is going to be like several months past this before, like before the Legion can get a buyer and have people who, developers who understand like what the restrictions are and what is possible?
Director Stark, and then I know councilmember Garcia would like to speak, so we'll go to her after.
Well, I would say, city manager Rodriguez and I spoke with all the Legion folks that are on this meeting today, including their legal staff. And I, I stated that exact same thing, that in a, you know, in an ideal situation, in best-case scenario, they would see where we're going with both our discussions about community space and see where we're going with some of the design standards we're discussing to the extent that they're, that a buyer is comfortable engaging, working with us. We'd like to work with a potential buyer to make sure that what we're proposing meets practical, you know, market realities. And that when, the day that the moratorium goes off, the next day they could submit a land use application. That is, that is optimistic. I don't know if it's quite optimistic to being Pollyanna-ish, but it is optimistic. The, the worst-case scenario, as you've heard from the Legion attorneys, would be that the moratorium scares off potential buyers. So that's kind of the, the continuum of how this would affect the process.
Thank you, Director Stark. Councilmember Garcia, are you on the line? Councilmember Garcia? I'm wondering, staff, if Blanca or Kelly have been working? Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, good. Okay, just, I appreciated all the discussion. But the other thing is, the, some of the points that have been made, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Veterans Park is the flagship park of Richfield. That's where we have the swimming pool, the ice arena, the ban shell, the veterinarian, the mini golf, the market, the shelter for the farmer's market, whatever. Can you imagine the intrusion that people are not, are not going to be, I think, happy if we wind up doing, doing something like multifamily housing? This has got to have a lot of public input. And there's a lot of other options that we can explore. And one of them is working with LISC, L-I-S-C. And, and I agree with them and maybe they can give us some guidance, which we already have had some. But the other thing is that, let's look at what available partnerships could be available that we're not even exploring. Because, you know, we've kind of opened the door and shut it. And let's, let's keep the door open, let's keep our options open because it'll really reward us in the long run. And one thing we can, we can work reward us in the long run. And one thing we can, we can work with is, you know, LISC is an organization that will partner with a community to seek some alternatives to, to certain issues like, like we're facing right now. And they will, and, and they will help us find some partnership. I mean, look at, look at the people that we could have to, you know, actually, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to say we don't want to have a partnership with the Legion. I think we can have a partnership with the Legion and we can do other things. For one thing, maybe, maybe we can use that, maybe Ennepin County might be interested in moving some, in having a presence in Richfield. Maybe the Metropolitan Airport Commission would be interested in having some presence in our community. Maybe even the Metropol could give us some ideas. But we've got to explore everything that we possibly can. And we have to have the public engagement and we have to put, I think, I think that multifamily housing would really be an intrusion into a, we consider even honor big deal park.
Councilmember Garcia, we're going to have to wrap up. We're behind. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I just want to make, make, remember this, you know, this, this is a unique opportunity. I don't think this can just say this or that's going to happen tonight or tomorrow night. I think we have to go up to the ninth month moratorium. And I think we have to explore every single option possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I'm going to wrap us up now. Unfortunately, we have to wrap this session up. I appreciate everyone who's participated. Thank you to the Legion coming and discussing and sharing your perspective. And we continue, we are looking forward to working together with you on this issue. I got permission from the city manager to pass it directly to our police chief to talk about the next item on our agenda, which is an update on COVID in Richfield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm going to turn it over to the City of Bloomington Acting Public Health Administrator, Nick Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez and councilmembers and commissioners. My name is Nick Kelly. I'm the Acting Public Health Administrator for the City of Bloomington, which has the privilege to provide public health services to the City of Richfield. I have a few slides to kind of center everybody on the data of what's going on in the community right now in Richfield. I think they're coming up here shortly. Sorry, you able to, to see that? All right. So this slide shows you the seven-day average cases per 100,000 in the City of Richfield. Richfield has seen a pretty substantial increase in COVID infections. We've seen a six-fold increase in cases since the beginning of October in Richfield. As of mid-November, Richfield's seeing around 125 cases per 100,000. That's a little higher than what we see at the state level and a bit higher than what we're seeing in Bloomington, Adana and Ennepin County. Part of that's some of the, the realities of the characteristics, the demographics of Richfield, and a little higher concentration of, of multi-unit housing and a higher number of workers that are essential and, and doing work in the community to keep our economy and society functioning. Sorry, I thought it was full screen. It's showing up as full screen on my side. I, I love technology. It's, we, you'd think we'd have some of these things figured out by now, eight months in, but sometimes it still surprises us.
We can see your screen just fine in the presentation.
Good. I'll make it a little larger. Sorry about that. This looks at likely exposure to COVID-19 in the community. As you can see on the left side, initially it started out primarily travel, healthcare and our congregate living setting. And that shifted as the pandemic progressed to a lot more community spread. And then we've had a substantial increase in that gray side in the last couple of weeks as cases have grown exponentially, where the contact investigation and some of the details just have not been completed to the same level. We're still seeing the majority of our cases prior to that coming from unknown community spread. So over 30% of the cases were community acquired, where we weren't really able to get an ascertainment of how they were getting sick. This looks at cases by age group per 10,000. And you can see in each one of these age groups, we see an increase in the last few weeks. It's most prominent in some of our younger adults in the 20 to 29 age group and the 40 group. They've had the, the largest increase in cases. But we see it in all age groups. Most concerning on our end is when we see it in the above 70, because that is, is where we're more likely to see severe outcomes, including hospitalization and potentially death. Richfield is also continuing to see a pretty disproportionate burden of COVID cases by race. So in this, you can see any BIPOC. So that's Black, Indigenous and People of Color, Black, Non-Hispanic, Hispanic, any race, and White, Non-Hispanic. And our, our Hispanic, any race, we're seeing about 10 cases per 1,000 residents compared to about six per 1,000 residents for our White, Non-Hispanic community. So there's that disproportional burden that is, is pretty pronounced in Richfield. And that is growing right now as we see cases popping up. Of note, from a reality standpoint, a common concern we're hearing when we're doing contact investigation and our, our state partners doing it are the challenge of lack of paid sick leave and the need to go to work. That's a, a pretty substantial concern in the BIPOC community. We've heard that routinely from our Latino, Hispanic community in Richfield, that they're, they're struggling with that reality of between a rock and a hard place of providing income for their families and following public health guidance and potentially missing work for two weeks and a paycheck. When we look at hospitalizations, the highest hospitalizations we had so far were in May. But October and November have rapidly increased. And when November is done, we expect November to be the highest rate of hospitalization so far. That's growing. And that, as hospitalization grows, we will see unfortunately some deaths follow. And so that is concerning as we've seen the increase in our over 70 population, where you can see most of our hospitalizations in Richfield have been in that age group. So the over 70 is almost half of the hospitalizations in Richfield, closely followed by the 60 to 69, the 50 to 59 age group. And then when we look at deaths, right now this graph looks not very concerning in October and November, because most of those deaths were in May. We see deaths from COVID lagging two to three weeks after hospitalization. And so knowing hospitalizations in November are probably going to exceed May, probably within the next week. We expect to see the deaths start to pick up at two to three week timeframe. So we will likely see that happen, which is an unfortunate reality of, of this pandemic is it is causing a pretty significant burden. And we're seeing that death increase in our older adults. We also see a disproportional impact in hospitalization and, and death in our BIPOC community. So that's a really high-level overview of, of some of the data we have about what's going on in Richfield with COVID. Cases are going up. We, we're expecting to see a bit of a decrease in cases as we come into the, the holiday weekend. And that'll probably show a little bump down and then bump back up as we start getting into December. The pause we're doing at the state level and the city's implemented really well is going to help slow that down. But we're on a, a challenging trajectory right now. That's what I had for the data, Chief Heathorne.
Thanks, Nick. Does anybody have any questions on any of the data that Nick has presented?
Thank you. Questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Wayland?
I think the perennial question that I, I think we, we know the answers to, and it's just a matter of doing them. I guess what, what do we do? And is, like, I know one of the, the pretty key factors is the, it's not, it's not cheap for people to stay home and that a relief, whether it's paid leave policies or more straight-up relief funding that like that, that helps. But I, I know our ability to do that at the city level is quite limited. And so I'm, I'm curious what, other than continuing to publicize the, the guidelines and encourage folks to follow them as best as they can, I'm curious what recommendations you have for, for us as the city? And what more can we be passing along to residents?
So Councilmember Wayland, that's a, it's a great question. One of the, the best things I think we can keep doing is making sure people are aware, sharing those stories, getting people to take action. What we see is about half the community in general here in Minnesota, and we see it also in Richfield, not necessarily paying attention. And it, we see a change in action and behavior once they have somebody that they know that's been impacted. The, the bigger question on how do we fix some of the, the inequities and the inequalities in this pandemic is, is a longer-term policy solution. And so most of that needs to happen at the state or federal level. But the more work we can keep doing to think about how do we, we innovate from a policy standpoint to protect our residents, because things like this will continue to happen. And so the more our policies and systems change to better take care of our communities, the, the better off we're going to be. So looking at paid sick leave, looking at other standards like that are, are good things to do and keep pressure on the state and our federal entities to, to keep those things in check. Because from a, a city level standpoint, there, there are things we can do to address some of those structural inequities. But our ability to change those things are, are limited to the city boundaries.
Thank you so much. Other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Kelly, for, for the sobering update. When it comes to the policymaking and the, the graph was that, I thought was particularly helpful with identifying where the, the COVID cases were outbreaking and that most of them were unknown. But historically, they've been predominantly in congregate living facilities. Are we in a place where we, we can, you know, are there any suggestions or resources that you need in terms of being able to surge resources or even surge communication to areas where the virus is surging? If it's multifamily housing, if it's congregate living, are there more bespoke approaches? Or there's any, is there anything concrete or specific that either we have been doing or that we might consider doing if we had more resources put in that direction?
Yeah. Mayor Gonzalez, Councilmember Troutman, one of the, the things that we're focused in, and we're working really well with Richfield's communication staff are, are getting those messages tailored. And so on a weekly basis, we're doing situation reports and, and helping drive communication to where it's needed. The, the graph didn't get into the nuance of the detail, but the majority of the cases are community-acquired. And, and what we look at is social settings. That is, is mostly workplaces, restaurants, and getting down into the gyms and some of the youth sports. And so the governor's pause is going to dramatically impact that. But then we continue to see that the gatherings and, and some of the smaller social events where people are, if you can't gather at a restaurant, you're going to gather in your backyard or in somebody's basement. That's where we continue to see a lot of that. And that's where it gets back to the, people need to understand this virus is dangerous and, and take action. And the city's doing a really good job getting that message out and tailoring it as the situation changes.
Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Levin. I, I'm sorry to do this, but we, this is for council. I know that folks from other commissions are here, but we're so short on time. Are there other questions or comments from, from councilmembers? And if not, okay, Commissioner, is Councilmember Supple?
Um, this is a very quick question. First of all, thank you for all your work. And I know we're focusing on containing the spread right now. Is there some long-term plan on what to do if a vaccine was developed or how we could facilitate that in the city, like getting it to people and things like that?
So, so Mayor Gonzalez, Councilmember Supple, we are actively working on plans to vaccinate residents of Richfield. Where it feels like our plans and guidance changes on a, on a daily basis as we get additional information from our federal and state partners. But we are actively working on that. And I would expect to see some of our hospital staff, not in Richfield, but potentially at Southdale or some of the other major hospitals in the metro, starting to get vaccinated by mid-December. And as we finalize the prioritization, which will become clear sometime after December 10th, we'll have better plans on how we're taking care of our first responders, initially in Richfield, and bringing it out to high-risk populations and then community-wide.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from councilmembers? I wanted to just ask a quick question. Thank you so much for the update and for, to all our staff in the Public Health Department for the work that they're doing. Could you talk a little bit about in Richfield, Bloomington and Adana, we have a unique situation that most cities don't have, where we have a municipally-based public health department, a county health department, then we have the state and the governor's office issuing orders. Can you talk about the coordination and what that partnership looks like? So we're not overlapping and we're maximizing all the work across all jurisdictions of government here in Richfield?
Mayor Gonzalez, that's a, that's a great question. We're, we're very fortunate to have city-based health departments. And we're continuing to be reminded of how valuable that is in this pandemic. Our, our ability to work hand in hand with the school district or, or city departments is not something that many of our county partners can do just from a scale standpoint. And we've seen that play out time and time again with our process. We work very closely with our county partner and our state partner at MDH. And that close working relationship is in part based on years of working together. They, they know what we do, we know what they do, and we work seamlessly that way to make sure we're not seeing any challenges or overlap. And we, we have our own swim lanes and we focus on those. So a, a good example of that was our ability to provide data on the impact of youth sports impacting cases in Bloomington or Diner and Richfield. We were the, one of the only metro jurisdictions that were able to turn around data that way and quickly provide it to some of our state representatives to help the governor's decision-making process. Our, our county counterparts weren't able to dig to that level of detail, because we're routinely looking at that city level.
Thank you very much. Other comments from staff, councilmembers, before we wrap up?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to turn it over to Jennifer Anderson for some comments, our Public Health Administrator for the City of Richfield.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, it looks like you're on mute.
Can you hear me now? 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 Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Good.
Yes.
Um, sorry about that. I just wanted to make a couple of comments um, on the some on the communication pieces with the community. That's been one of the biggest uh, challenges uh, in the pandemic and one that I think that we are succeeding at uh, more and more every day. Um, I just wanted to mention in terms of our BIPOC uh, population here in the city, the MDH recently um, came out with this uh, COVID community coordinators, and they are um, social agencies around the metro that serve BIPOC communities. But they've been um, connected and based on what county they're in can serve populations within um, specific cities. So those agencies, for example, in Hennepin County are Well Share International, Clues, um, Brivia Health, and they've got uh, Latino community coordinators, Somali community coordinators. And so our BIPOC populations connect, can connect with those organizations and get resources uh, for food, rent assistance, um, you know, anything that's needed. Um, and those are also resources that that the city has put out very early on in the pandemic through um, postal mailing in multiple languages. There's about to be another postal mailing, uh, I think going out the first week in December. Um, and so we've been working very creatively uh, around social media, mailings, um, community, pulling community together um, to make sure that the city has feedback on needs um, and and gaps that we're not aware of. So um, it's, it's been quite an undertaking and I, you know, I think we're gleaning a lot from the work that we're doing and in hopes that if something like this to this magnitude ever rolls around again, that that we've got a really great toolkit um, to get things rolling, I think, earlier um, than we did initially. You know, there was so much planning and so much unknown in the beginning, we really didn't have an idea as to kind of the scale of of what this would look like nine months later, so.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. Any last comments or questions from council members? All right, well, I do want to thank our staff, our public health staff, our public safety, our core team in Richfield. Um, all of our community partners and everyone working around the clock. It's been so many months where our lives have rapidly changed and um, all of our staff are on the front lines of that in our community. So thank you for the update, um, and we'll continue to work together. I know there might have been some questions from our commissioners. Feel free to please email us or the staff and we'll make sure um, to get those questions answered. And I know we'll have con- continuous updates on COVID. Thank you to all our staff for the tremendous work that you're doing. We know there's a lot on your shoulders.